They like to call to order the special council meeting for Monday, January 27th, 2025. This meeting is streaming live on YouTube and Summerland YouTube. And that's all I got. So any late items, corporate officer?
No.
Approval agenda, please. Counselor Peak, Counselor Betts, all in favor of that carries. And we'll just go straight to our business item, wastewater treatment plant, primary clarifier. Ask the C A to start it off.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. So we are here today to provide an update on the project to build the second primary clarifier, which is a very complex processing feature of our sewer treatment plant. Right now, we have no backup for this system. And we have had periods where we do exceed our regulatory requirements. Adding a new one gives us better compliance, better capacities, and redundancy in the system for things like maintenance when that needs to happen to the other one. It has been in the capital plan for some time. And once we had design ready, we got public assent for borrowing and user rates have now increased to pay for that borrowing. The bids are back now from our RFP and they're much higher than anticipated in part due to inflationary pressures, but also because more work is needed to tie this feature in to the existing facility than originally anticipated. We have prepared some options, including a plan, how to deal with this financial pressure if the project is to proceed. And we're looking for council's guidance on the next steps. And with that, I'll turn it over, if I may, Mr. Mayor, to our Director of Utilities, Jeremy Strahall.
Thank you very much. Counsel, thank you for taking the time to discuss this important topic. As our C A O mentioned, the tender is closed for this project right now. And we have been reviewing the bids and the bid review shows cost challenges for this much needed project. In this slide deck, we're going to discuss the reasons for the project, just to refresh everyone's memory on that. We'll go over the current budget as it stands, the post-tender estimate. We'll talk about the cost differentials between those two and strategies to continue the project. And pictured here, we have a, I'm going to refer back to this later in the slide in the presentation, but in yellow on this drawing, it shows the new components that we're adding. And the big round tank is the new primary clarifier. On the phone, we have A E Com, who's our design consultant. Randy Craig is the lead operations consultant. He's on Zoom, but he is in some shoddy Wi-Fi. So we're mostly talking with David Licon, he's the Senior Wastewater Process Engineer. So welcome to you guys. So just for a reminder, what to counsel, what this project is. When you drive into the wastewater treatment plant, you pull up to the admin building and behind you is the large circular tank. That's the primary clarifier. This project is to install a second primary clarifier beside the original. The existing primary clarifier is reaching end of life and cannot be taken out of service to perform much needed maintenance and life extension work. In addition, an additional important reason for this is to meet provincial municipal wastewater regulations, which requires two clarifiers for redundancy. At the wastewater treatment plant, we have regulations to comply with. With the plant's current configuration, we are unable to meet permit requirements for average phosphorus with exceedances occurring monthly and total nitrogen levels nearing our permit limits. The addition of the primary clarifier is a first step in the five-year capital plan aimed at bringing the wastewater treatment plant into compliance and establishing capacity for the planned future developments in Summerland. And I would like to remind counsel that the district has public assent on borrowing and implemented a rate increase to accommodate this important and critical project. The current budget allocation for 2025 is $2.8 million with $1,828,000 from reserves and $984,000 from borrowing. The original borrowing was 1.2 million last year, which amounted to a $22.69 per year for each wastewater rate pair, which was the equivalent to a 5.15% rate increase. They were showing the brief history of the wastewater treatment plant primary clarifier project with its first appearance in the 2019 wastewater treatment plant facility plan. In subsequent years, the primary clarifier was added to the five-year capital plans. In 2024, we completed an update to the wastewater treatment plant facility plan, including costing, which was used to budget for the project. Detailed design followed and we issued a tender for construction in 2024, which closed about two weeks ago. It is important to note here that the estimates in the facility plan aligned with a preliminary design that followed the design philosophy of the existing plant. As we got deeper into the design, various pressure points with the existing plant were revealed. Through heavy consultation with our plant operators, we determined that some of the struggles they've been having with the plant process are due to inherent design issues with the original plant. In short, the existing plant does not follow current best practices and has inherent flaws that have resulted in the need for additional equipment to improve the treatment process and move the treatment plant closer to compliance. So counsel, as I mentioned in the previous slide, the tender is closed and we have had a chance to evaluate the bids. Based on that evaluation, we have the new project estimate of 5.4 million for 2025. This results in a funding gap of 2.6 million. The primary driver of the cost differential is due to the need for a pump gallery as part of the new primary clarifier. I'm actually going to jump back to the first slide, just to show that drawing again. So counsel, you can see on that drawing the new in yellow round clarifier and sort of to the south on the drawing or down, you can see this sort of square block that's attached to it. And so that is the pump gallery and it makes up about a third of the square footage of the primary clarifier. It's between the new primary clarifier and the office building there. The pump gallery is necessary component of the process. During planning and early stages of project estimation, it was expected that a new primary clarifier would follow the same design philosophy of the existing clarifier, which does not have a pump gallery. A E Com's analysis has shown that a pump gallery is necessary to ensure the process functions as needed for the process to function correctly. Secondary drivers include concrete cost increases, site drainage improvements, and working around A L R restrictions. And in case counsel didn't know, much of the wastewater treatment plant site is located in the A L R. So staff have prepared a four-part strategy to manage the cost differential. Those include deferrals of some capital work, reduction and changes to the clarifier scope and utilization of the sewer D C Cs and surplus accounts. We'll get into each one of those. Part one of the strategy is to defer the following projects. The filter building renovation, Headworks Fine Screen Spare, original clarifier refurbishment, and the purchase of a large sludge bin. This total value is nearly $800,000 and we'll get into exact timing for these deferrals later in the slide deck. For part two, we took a close look at the design and scope of the work to look for any potential savings that would not negatively impact the safety or functionality of the plant. We have some of those items listed here totaling an estimated $280,000. Now, just to be clear for counsel on these items, staff would like to reserve flexibility on how to adjust the project to achieve this 280,000. Once we have clear direction from counsel in the project, we would like to meet with the lead bidder and discuss their take on cost savings. Working with the construction company to review the design and find savings can be a very good and productive exercise. We may find better items that could be swapped out on this list, but the goal will be to have at least $280,000 in savings. Scope reductions could be implemented as necessary to keep the project within budget and reserve our contingency. Our next part of the funding strategy is to utilize our sewer D C Cs. This will provide 1.6 million towards the $2.6 million funding gap. Then our final part four is to utilize our sewer surplus account for any contingencies that arise. We would also redirect $300,000 from the Eco Village Sewer Project. This funding would only be used if needed. So to summarize each value, the value of each part of that strategy is listed here totaling roughly 2.6 million and closing that gap. We're also providing here an alternate project strategy, which would pause the project by three years. This strategy does come with increased risks and does not align well with the district's development plans, but we wanted to discuss this option with counsel. If the project was to be delayed, the primary concern is with the exist, the condition of the existing primary clarifier. Its mechanism is end of life and has known problems and known failed components. The biggest challenge is that it cannot be taken out of service as that would result in considerable permit exceedances in phosphorus and nitrogen. There is also a possibility that the clarifier fails entirely, requiring operators to bypass the clarifier for an extended period of time. This would require authorizations from Ministry of Environment and possibly result in administrative penalties against the district. A secondary consequence would include a continued increase of our PAC expenditures. PAC is a chemical we use to offset our phosphorus and reputational consequences as a result of being over permit. Finally, as we've seen in other countless examples, when projects are delayed, inflationary pressures push project costs up over time. So counsel, setting our attention towards the horizon, the wastewater treatment plant needs investment to increase capacity to accommodate the planned community growth. After the clarifier project, the following and following the capital plan laid out by counsel, staff will be looking at the next phase, which is the bioreactor expansion. Since these plant expansion projects are unlike district typical projects such as roads or building power line or water main, those projects have fewer unknown unknowns. A future project strategy for the bioreactor would include a year of detailed design and estimations based on issued for tender drawings, then a year of alternate approval process and tendering, then a year of construction. This adds a year to the project timeline, but is necessary given the complexities of the treatment process, condition of the existing plant, and changes in engineering best practices for these types of facilities. Staff will return to counsel before any decisions are made to determine a financial plan and timing. So we have a council resolution here. And I'll, I'll just read it verbatim because it does talk about each project, the amounts and the year they would land in. So to defer the $350,000 wastewater capacity and renewal project budgeted for 2025 to 2026, that is the refurbishment of the existing clarifier. So that'd be a mechanism refurbishment, maybe replacement. Second here is to defer the sludge bin purchase to 2026. It's currently in 2025. To defer the filter building renovation project to 2027, that is also a 2025 project. To determine, sorry, to deter, defer the Headworks Fine Screen Spare project to 2027. Again, that project is a 2025 project. To increase the 2025 budget cost of the primary clarifier by $2,330,490 from $2,812,760 to $5,143,250. To increase, to fund the increase by allocating 1.6 million from the sewer D C C reserve, allocating an additional $730,490 from the sewer capital reserve, and reduce the 2025 connecting community sewer expansion project by 300,000 and reallocating that 300,000 back into the growing community reserves to allocate 205,000 from the sewer utility surplus account and 300,000 from the growing communities reserve to be utilized if required to fund any necessary contingency items required for the primary clarifier project. That's a long one. Okay, now we're onto questions and we do have A E Com on the phone too, if we want to get into some technical needs. But passing it over to Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with Counselor Van Elfen, then Counselor Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to our Director of Utilities. So re, looking at the slides and reading all this, the primary clarifier that's there today is budgeted for 2025, 2026, or whatever, for replacement of $350,000?
That amount is for the existing primary clarifier refurbishment.
Okay, so stopping everything we're talking about today and we refurbish what we have there today would cost us $350,000 and that we can defer this for future years.
Through the mayor, to Counselor Van Elfen, that would be a struggle to complete because we would need to take the primary clarifier out of service and there's not a second one there now in order to do that. And so that's why the regulation stipulates that you have two primary clarifiers, so that you can remove one from service and be able to run on your second one, do your refurbishment, do your maintenance. And so we're unable to do that at our, at our wastewater plant because the primary clarifier is absolutely critical to the process.
So, but if the primary clarifier that we have today failed, we can get, we can notify the province saying, hey, we got a problem. We're going to be down for a few days rebuilding, fixing, what have you. Same thing could be, we could have a brand new clarifier come in, pick the old one out, put the new one in, we're down for a few days and it's 350 grand.
Through the mayor, the, to, a new mechanism purchase for the primary clarifier, the second primary clarifier is a year-long process for a new mechanism to have fabricated, designed and fabricated. So it would be likely a year, it would be out of service. That's what I would plan for. And if that was to take place, we would be well over permit during that time. So it is a lengthy time timeline. It is not a quick turnaround and it does depend on how it fails and what component fails. The mechanism right now, the gearbox is broken and is exposed to the elements. It's actually get, where we have wastewater material going into the gearbox currently. So there's, there's problems with that mechanism now. And under the surface of what's in the primary clarifier, we don't even know the condition of that mechanism currently because we can't see it. So it does, it does need, it potentially needs a full mechanism replacement.
So taking that out of service to refurbish, it would, it would have to be out of service up to a year.
Yeah, that's correct.
My Counselor Chairman.
Jeremy, what is the life expectancy of the treatment plant? Once we, if we add a second clarifier?
Thank you, through the mayor. The clarifier is one component in the whole plant. So the plant was built in the late 90s and here we are in 2025 and we're seeing, we're seeing trouble with our assets there. And so we have Fine Screen Works, Headworks, which is its own separate part of the process. We have secondary clarifiers, again, its own part. We have a bioreactor, all of the Headworks buildings, centrifuge. So by, by adding another primary clarifier, it doesn't renew the whole plant. So it's good for another 25 years. It will renew that one piece of the process. And so that's why in the capital plan, we have a bioreactor sort of coming up as the next phase. And as, as we're doing the clarifier and bioreactor and some of the main components of the process, we're also fixing plumbing and pumps and things that are tertiary components and renewing those. And councils also provided funding, capital funding for pumps in this, in 2024. And so we've done a lot of pump upgrades and we've made changes there and done some renewal there. And we've actually modified our process a little bit to get better permit numbers in, in 2025. So we're actually, we've implemented some new systems in that, using some of those smaller funding items that councils provided us. So short answer to your question is, we'll have a new clarifier that's good for 25 years.
Okay, I just, because $5 million is a big investment to make in it. So I just wanted to know, you know, what we can expect out of this, but I understand that there are many moving parts to that facility. Okay, this might be a silly question, but when, when there's big projects like this, how many opinions do you get? I'm just asking, you know, like, do you get, do you get different opinions? You know, just wondering.
Just to, for clarity, opinions on like the design?
Yeah, and, and the cost increase, like, and, and is this exactly what we need? Because again, it's a lot of money and so I just want to make sure that this is in fact what we need. And, and do, you know, are, are there different opinions on, on how a primary clarifier should look? Or is there one industry standard kind of thing?
Thank you. That's a really good question through the mayor. So we did, I did speak with A E Com, so they've done lots of these designs and implemented these projects. And, and just simply asked them, is there another way? Or is there a, is there something we've missed? Maybe there's a new tech or is there another thing we can do? And they came back with, no, not for the plant that we have. So it uses a circular primary clarifier. And so to match with that, we need another circular primary clarifier. So there, there's no fancy other solution that would, that would work for us. The, the plant was built with a certain process in mind and so this would work with that process.
Counselor Peak.
Thank you. Realizing that this is quite an increase from what we expected it to be, I appreciate the question in terms of design because obviously what we started with has some design flaws, which the staff have recognized over time. I would hope that we're not repeating the same kind of design flaws when we come to a new primary circulating, a clarifier or any of the other components, whether the bio or act or otherwise. So I want to be clear that we won't be repeating those mistakes. We may get, we may get different ones. I do not see deferring this project as an opportunity. I think that that becomes liability. So I think we need to work forward with what we're doing. I think that our five-year plan, it has proven to be something that we can work with financially. This is more than a hiccup, so we have to find a way to work through the dollars. But I think that as a counselor, I see that we need to do this primary clarifier replacement or expansion, especially for the fact that we have known over the last 15 years of trying to get grants to do the things we need to do. While we continue to look for them, they just are not available. And when we look at our own country and, and with the federal government changes and that, I think that we're going to be some time before we do get grants at our federal grants. So I think it's important to stay the course and do this project.
Counselor Van Elfen.
Thank you, through to our Director of Utilities, the pump gallery. Is this a new engineering design change over the last few weeks? Because I don't recall this being discussed at budget at all.
Thank you, counselor. The, we didn't have costing for the pump galleries. We were designing it, we designed it into the project in the fall. So it was, it was around the time of budgeting, but we didn't have an estimate on what that would cost us. So we knew, we knew we needed to do it to make it work, but we didn't have numbers for counsel at that time. And currently we have very good estimates because we've been able to go out to tender, which recently closed. So we have, we have a real bid in hand. We actually have multiple bids in hand. And I would add that our, our bids are all very close to each other. There's no outlier where someone came in low or someone came in high. They're all actually very close. And so that's going to give us a high degree of confidence in, in the construction component.
Counselor Betts, then Pat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions, Jeremy, for in the event of a failure. So when in the slides, it speaks about elevated phosphorus and nitrogen levels exceeding our amounts, et cetera. But in, if we can break that down to how our residents look at it, if our primary clarifier fails or we need to do a potentially year-long maintenance project on it, does that mean that raw sewage is being released into Lake Okanagan?
Thank you, counselor, through the mayor. David Licon is on the, on the call. David, I'm going to bring you into this question here since you're the Senior Wastewater Process Engineer. If you don't mind, David, just jumping in and commenting on the phosphorus and nitrogen levels and what that, what impact that would have on Okanagan Lake.
Sure, thank you, Jeremy. The challenge, like the, I'll try and explain this like fairly succinctly, but the, the primary clarifier, what it's used for primarily is to generate what's called volatile fatty acids. And they're used within the bioreactor to help reduce the phosphorus. And this is a process that's used at pretty much every facility in the Okanagan and it's, and it's been used quite effectively. So without having that primary clarifier, you won't be able to, to fully reduce your phosphorus. And that's for Lake Okanagan, that's probably one of the major concerns is, is the nutrient loading. And in addition to that, the primary clarifier also takes a lot of the, the organic load or about 30% of the organic load off of the bioreactor. So there's a good chance that you'll also exceed the organic component of your final effluent. So getting back to your main question is like, will it be raw sewage? No, it won't be raw sewage, but it'll be an effluent which is not meeting permit and will have a detrimental effect on the, on the lake itself by adding excessive amounts of nutrient. Hopefully that clarifies things for you.
Thank you. Yes, it does clarify in a way, you know. And so we're, we're here to have this discussion and to think about aspects that our residents would think about and whether or not it's the right answer. We're going to ask these questions and talk about them. So in the event that if we had to choose, we had to choose between a primary clarifier and a $5 million primary clarifier and a $5 million bioreactor. And for example, say we had to take, and our primary clarifier fails while we're waiting for that next project to happen. And we take it offline for a year as we're waiting to significantly invest and repair it. Is there a workaround in the meantime that would cost money? But to deal with this affluent and the increased levels of, of problems that would be left if we didn't have the primary clarifier working, if we just had one? What, what's our workaround, other than just, you know, having higher phosphorus and nitrogen levels going into the lake? Is there something we can do? Can we use dump trucks and take product to the landfill? What other options are there?
David, you can go ahead, but I know there are mobile equipment for rent and that, that is a possibility, but of course at a very high cost. David, solutions?
You could potentially add, because the, the, basically what the, what the primary clarifier is producing like naturally or biologically, you could certainly import chemicals that could be added to the bioreactor to sort of take the place of the volatile. to sort of uh take the place of the volatile fatty acids. That would come at a cost, obviously, and it's not, um, and you also have to deal with the, the safe handling of the chemical as well. So that becomes a bit of a challenge. So I guess from that perspective, that is a possible workaround. Taking the clarifier out, there's no real viable workaround for the added organic load that's going to go on the bioreactor. So you're, you're still at risk of exceeding um the organic load that would come out in your final effluent. But there are chemical additions, but the, and I don't know the, the price of the chemical off the top of my head, but I would rather suspect a year's worth of that could potentially exceed this delta that you're experiencing with your, um, your capital project.
Yeah, Counselor Patton.
Um, thank you, worship. I just want to go back to something that Jeremy said in response to Counselor Van Elfen. So you brought it budget time in two point eight million dollars. If we took a fifteen percent increase in costs at that time, we'd be looking, give or take three point two two zero million. So this two point one million dollars for your primary pump gallery, you did not put into the costing at budget for this. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, that, that's correct. So the, the pump gallery was not included at budget time. We did not know we needed this uh component and what the pricing would be.
If I may, um, after this meeting is over, I'd like to go into closed in regards to labor, please.
Um, Counselor.
If we went out of compliance because of any of the decisions we make today and that we get a high organics or phosphorus into the lake, are we in jeopardy for fines in that case?
Thank you, counselor. Through the mayor, um, some municipalities in the past have been subject to administrative penalties for, for going over their permit. So we, I can't say what that would be, but it would be up to the regulator.
So, so I guess, I think the question that has to be asked is, is how, how is this so? How's the budget, the project estimate so out of whack? And are we gonna, um, it, is this something we should be expecting for other projects? And if so, what does this mean for our, our whole asset management strategy? Right? I mean, that's, that's why we're having this special meeting. I don't know who wants to take that, but I think it has to be asked. Nobody? See you.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I was consulting with a corporate officer on a technical question. Can you repeat that?
I'm just wondering how, how is it the project estimate was so out of whack from what was first proposed? And is this something we, we can expect on other projects? And if so, um, what does this mean for our whole asset management strategy?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I'll take a crack at that. It's a, it's an important question and one that I've been talking with Jeremy about. And I think um a learning for the future on these really complex projects. Like this type of a processing facility, which is like having a giant science experiment with computers running it. These type of things, I think, need to go to a detailed design before we go out to RFP. A lot of our projects, we can do preliminary design and it gets us to within, you know, plus or minus twenty percent. And so more routine projects, projects that are more common in the industry, more bidders. I think that's an appropriate thing, but as noted on the slide relating to the bioreactor, the intent for that piece, given its price point, and it's also a complex processing item. Well, what I, in my view, I think the key thing we have to build into our processes is um detailed design for a project like that goes forward for council in the plan. Uh, we don't have a lot of those really complex ones in it. So further to your other question about, does this shake the foundation sort of our broader capital planning approach? I, I don't think it does, but we certainly want to do detailed design on that next piece, which is the bioreactor to make sure we avoid this uh scenario.
Counselor Van Elfen.
Couple of questions, if I may. Um, on one of the slides, it showed forty-five K in gravel. Is that from our gravel reserves? And the other question is the Eco Village Sewer Project taking money from a project that we haven't started yet. Can somebody explain that one to me, please?
I could take a shot at both of those, if I may, Mr. Mayor, through the Counselor Van Elfen. So the gravel piece is, my understanding is that is, and Dana's here, but uh we have uh Cantex that operates in the district under lease to us. And part of our arrangement with Cantex is they have the ability to provide gravel on competitive rates with uh, you know, market rates on, on our project. So we don't include gravel when we go to RFP for bid because they have that arrangement. That's why it's listed separately and it's not in that bid total. Further to your other question, the, uh, I have consulted with our Director of Public Works extensively on the pricing or the sewer piece that we're talking about, taking that three hundred thousand from. And given uh recent conversations with the developer that we're working on in that same area, uh, there's going to be significant savings with the conclusion of that arrangement. And he's feeling very comfortable, even with a large contingency on, uh, on our sewer project that, uh, for that sewer line, that we can redirect those funds back. We don't need the entire one point eight any longer, so it's, uh, there's for council reallocation. Of course, what's contemplated here, from what I understand, looking at that strategy for, I think Jeremy talked about, is that that would just be held in sort of a contingency to manage pressures as opposed to necessarily going to actually fund these, these, uh, the project itself unless it's absolutely necessary.
Counselor Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this question might be for Dave, our Director of Finance. And so um just to back it up so that um council and our residents who are listening have a better understanding of the funding of projects like this. Can you just kind of illuminate how a capital project like this is funded? Who is paying for it? For example, um, I believe we're in a situation where only residents who receive sewer services are subject to the AAP and the increased um sewer utility charges, right? So um in terms of capital spending in a specific area like that, is it affecting all residents of Summerland, only users of the sewer? Just we need to, everybody really needs to understand, is this everybody's taxes? Are they all going up? Is it only sewer users? And are these same sewer users then the only ones on hand for the bioreactor spending, which is another five million dollars? Just can you kind of speak to the funding of capital projects in a specific utility?
Through the mayor to Counselor Betts, uh, good question. Uh, in terms of the sewer utility, you're correct. Any types of projects within the sewer utility uh are funded by the users of that utility. So if a resident is not hooked up to the sewer system, they would not be paying for a project like this. In terms of funding the project, uh, the initial budget incorporated, uh, I believe it was one point two million dollars with the borrowing. Um, and the rest of the money was to come from reserves. So from that perspective, the borrowing, of course, uh, I think Jeremy alluded to it, came out to about five point one five percent of a, a rate increase that was required uh in the twenty twenty-five uh rates. Um, and then the reserves themselves, uh, going back to a comment the mayor had made, you know, asset management practices that the district's doing. So over the years, council has done a, a very good job in, in, in putting monies away in our, not only in our utilities, but also in the general fund. So when we look at our sewer utility, it's, it's a fairly small utility when we compare it to our, our other two and as well as our general fund. So like a one percent rate increase in the sewer utility generates seventeen thousand dollars worth of revenue. So over the years, uh, th- those types of councils, council decisions to put money away have equated to uh where we're now putting about half a million dollars into reserves annually in the sewer utility. So one of the strategies we're looking at was, you know, deferring some of the projects uh from twenty twenty-five out into future years. Uh, the rationale there is we, we can't pay for all of them now. Um, we are putting away half a million dollars a year. So over the next four years, we can get to all those different projects uh because of that investment that the council has put forward. But uh, yeah, so in terms of the sewer utility itself though, it is, it is just the users of that utility that are paying for this project. Uh, any future capital projects, i.e. such as the bioreactor, which when we're looking at four point eight million dollars and where our reserve levels are at, should this move forward, uh, we would have to go through an AAP process. Uh, I hope that answers your question.
Um, it, it does answer my question, but I think it also leads to this other questioning of, of, of that cost, right? So if we um utilize the majority of our sewer reserve to um finish paying for this project and then we use our ser- our savings over the next number of years to pay for the projects that are maybe being pushed out by these decisions, we, we're not ahead in preparing for the bioreactor. We're at zero. So that's very concerning to me. But as a counselor, when I'm looking at the whole budget and approving some of the other expenditures on some of the other projects that we moved forward, we're now putting so much pressure on our residents that we maybe would have had to make decisions differently at budget time in, in increases of two and a half million dollars. So that's where residents are going to be upset is that anybody on the sewer utility, their costs are just growing and we weren't able to make adjustments in the budget accordingly. And that's where I am feeling the pressure right now.
Yeah, it would help if we got more people on sewer, and I think we should continue focusing on that, you know, so. Cause then share the costs more. Uh, Counselor Chair.
Um, I have to leave in about three minutes because um one of my uh kids has a medical appointment that I can't get out of. Which is really unfortunate because I want to be here for the rest of this discussion, but um. So not knowing how you guys are going to land with this, I just wanted to say that, I mean, we, I'm sure we all feel this. It's a huge price increase and um, but you know, sewer is, when I think of all the things that we do as a municipality and the fact that we dump our sewage into a lake, it is our responsibility to make sure we're doing it right. So I agree with Counselor Peak in not putting this off. Um, I've also heard um unofficially from people that live along the lake in Trote Creek. They have been asking me in recent months about the levels of phosphorus and ni- nitrogen that are being dumped in the lake because they have noticed a difference in terms of water quality, um, the stuff that's washing up onto their beaches. So I, I don't know what's going on there, but I just, it makes me think that we really need to make sure we are um complying with provincial regulations in terms of phosphorus and nitrogen. So if this primary clarifier um helps us, you know, make sure that we are meeting that, I think that that is our, our top responsibility. Um, and then in terms of um where to fund this, I, you know, what staff have laid out is okay. I'm not sure what council will come up with after this, but I am um in support of moving forward with this. So, thanks.
Counselor Barkley.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I, um, when I first went through this, I didn't realize, and I just want to double check this, that the, uh, what, what's labeled here on page six, the primary driver is the primary pump gallery. It's the addition of the pump gallery, not an increase to the cost of the pump gallery. Okay, that explains a lot for me. I think Counselor Van Elfen kind of twigged me onto that. He was a more alert. So um, that being said, the um, the, the other seven hundred thousand is just the sort of price increases we see at these times. All right. Um, I wondered, I guess I want to say from the beginning that I don't see we have, we have any choice. You know, protecting the water is a number one priority. Avoiding provincial fines is number one priority. The, I heard on the radio this morning, Prince Rupert just got fined hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for, you know, not maintaining uh their landfill runoff. So they are serious about these things and so are we. So even before getting the answer to my next question, I'm going to say, yes, we got to go ahead. This looks like we don't have any choice and it seems like a reasonable plan. I just wondered how the bioreactor fits into the whole system. Like it's not in the um, the very first page where it shows the clarifiers and the primary and secondary clarifiers. Well, um, why do we need the new bioreactor or addition or, you know, what's happening with the bioreactor? And, and the necessity for it?
Thank you, counselor. Through the mayor, um, David Licon helped us with our update to our facility plan. David, if you could uh maybe describe the process a little bit from primary to bioreactor?
Sure. Um, well, I guess just backing up a little bit, the, as, as we've discussed, the, the primary clarifier, then, you know, one of the main drivers for that was the fact that you only have one of those units. So, and you have one that's at risk of failure, so we're adding the second one. You know, primarily just to aid in that process to have a redundant unit. Now with the bio, bioreactor, you already have two of them. And the increase in, or the new bioreactor is solely a capacity increase. Cause as you can imagine, you know, as your community grows, the loads to the plant increase and puts a strain on the existing bioreactor. And when we did our planning work, um, you know, all indications were that at a certain timeline, you would require additional bioreactor capacity. And also appreciating, you know, we usually indicate a date when that's required and then we back that off to allow for construction, design, et cetera. So, and you know, this is um, you know, just want to give a little bit of information on the um, the primary clarifier, that, that original estimate that the funding was based on, that was done at a, what would be a preliminary level of design. And as, as suggested for the bioreactor, you'd certainly want to have a higher level of design before, you know, looking at what the, the funding would be required.
Counselor Betts.
Um, thank you for that. Um, my question is actually for our Director of Utilities, Jeremy. So some of the delayed items in the strategy. I know we've been talking about, for example, the fine screen spare, et cetera. Are these um, are these items well suited to be delayed? Or are any of them really important? Like of the items, both on Strategy One and Strategy Two, I know you guys have worked hard to take them out, but I just would like to know if there's anything that um for efficiencies and cost and et cetera that should remain, that we should discuss remaining in. Do you have any opinions about that?
Thank you, counselor. Very good question. Through the mayor. We can go through on part one of the strategy, just line by line here, filter building renovation. Uh, so that is to convert our filter building into a storage facility. So we can absolutely postpone that. Okay, not critical to the process. Uh, the Headworks Fine Screen Spare. So we actually ordered a new um fine screen in twenty twenty-four and that is on site and we'll be installing it here. And so that, that's a twenty twenty-four capital project. This is to purchase, uh, sorry, to send away the existing fine screen for full refurbishment. So we have a spare on the shelf, so to speak. Um, we can definitely postpone that. So we'll have a brand new one in service here in the next couple of months. And so um, we, we don't necessarily need one on the shelf today. We, we could wait a few years for that. Uh, the original clarifier refurbishment, we can postpone that because we'll have a brand new clarifier in service. And if we needed to uh run the original, we could do that. We know it's working today. So when the new one goes into service, uh, the original will still be there. We'll be able to do a full assessment on it. We need to drain it as part of the new clarifier installation, so we can. We need to drain it as part of the new clarifier installation, so we can do an assessment on that. Now, right now, we don't know what needs to be done with that original clarifier. So we need to drain that system, get in there. This estimate is just is just an estimate based on, we don't know. Here, here's a number for now. If it needs a full mechanism replacement, we'll we'll do an estimate for that. Maybe it just needs some welding, some concrete work, gears replaced, et cetera. So again, that is a placeholder for now and is and is waiting for us to drain that system. So that one can be delayed without huge risk. The sludge bin, we are experiencing more wasting at the wastewater plant because we're adjusting some processes. We can pick up the existing bin more frequently if we needed to. So the the new sludge bin was going to be larger and have more capacity, but we have two sludge bins now and a spare. And we could run back and forth to the landfill more frequently if we needed to. So again, we can delay that project. Yeah, so those are all good projects to delay. Okay, anything further, Counselor Patton?
Thank you, Worship. So I don't think the primary clarifier is what we're discussing. I think what we're discussing here is the two point one one five million that was the primary pump gallery that wasn't included in our budget deliberations. So we already have a pump gallery, I would assume, a pump that's using our primary clarifier now. Why could we not utilize those pumps for the new clarifier?
Thank you, Counselor, another excellent question through the mayor. David, can you take that one as well? Sorry, Lycon.
Jeremy, I can take that one. I think David had to step away. The existing primary sludge pump is in the underneath the DAF building and it's quite a long suction line. And in fact, that pump doesn't even work right now. The operators are having to waste primary sludge by gravity. Not the best way of doing things. This pump gallery is to facilitate the pumps being right beside the tank to lessen the suction run. So it's that that comes back to the best design practice. And David's back now. David, a question was asked about why can't we use the existing primary pumps?
The question, oh, yeah, Randy may have already addressed this, my apologies, I had to step away briefly, but the the way the plant was, or the way the first primary clarifier was designed was using a design practice which is not ideal, but, you know, recognizing that the the delivery method was a design build and sometimes you're trying to, you know, come up with economies of design just to allow your your price to be competitive. But the challenge is, like Randy may have already mentioned, that you have the the sludge pumps require a suction line and ideally you want that pump as close as possible to the clarifier because if it has a really long sludge line, then it can become blocked very easily because this is a fairly thick material. It can get up to kind of six, seven percent solids. And if you're trying to pull that in from a long distance, you can get into some really significant operational challenges and it's just not a an engineering best practice. So that's that's why we went the route of putting the pump gallery beside the the clarifier itself.
Thank you. So even though it's not an engineering best practice, it could be done?
It could be, yes, it could be done, but the challenge is, I mean, there's also, you know, as you can appreciate reputationally, as a company, we do not like to design things that we have, like we have, we're uncomfortable with and we feel that may not work. And then unfortunately, if they don't work, you know, the the finger pointing falls directly on us as a design company. So, you know, we always endeavor and that's, you know, quite honestly, what you're paying for is our engineering expertise. So that's what we endeavor to do is provide the best, the best solution, the best cost effective solution.
Counselor Peak?
Thank you. I I wonder, I would like a little explanation on the cost differential when I'm looking at two point one one five. So I'm not sure the component, so what is the civil cost? What does that refer to? And is the concrete, it's just for the pump gallery? It wasn't accounted in the original cost because we weren't doing a pump gallery in the beginning? And the instrument, all these other things, these are just related to the pump gallery, I'm assuming. And my other question is, when did it become apparent that we needed a pump gallery?
Thank you, Counselor, through the mayor. David, could you take those as well with it for the and walk us through the cost differential? The civil, concrete, HVAC, electrical, process mechanical, et cetera?
Sure, just I'm just kind of, I have your presentation here, Jeremy, I just want to. Yeah. Well, the civil works is that the farther away that the the primary clarifier is from where the where we're pumping to, you know, there's a lot of underground piping. And once you start tearing up the 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 site, you know, you get into a lot of restoration of site paving, the grading. And then also just the excavation work itself, that that's sort of what's reflected in the civil cost. The concrete costs of that's just is what it is. It's just the additional concrete required for that structure that's tacked on to the primary clarifier. The HVAC, that's the heating, ventilation and air conditioning, which is just a generic term for basically making that pump gallery, you know, comply with codes and standards for habitability and air movement because it is it is a space that requires both heating and ventilation. And then the instrumentation that's that's related, the electrical instrumentation is related to the added HVAC and the added process mechanical. Process mechanical refers to the pumps and the mass raiders and all the valves and pipe work that would be within that gallery itself. So that's that's what all those costs are. And I'm sorry, I believe you had a, you also had a second question.
Yes, thank you, David, if I may, Mr. Mayor. The second question was, when did it become apparent that we needed a pump gallery?
Yeah, good question. As we we inherited this job from another consultant who had originally done some of the planning work and, you know, in their planning work, they had indicated effectively duplicating what you already had on site. And as we began to refine our design, we recognized that it was going to be, as this clarifier is quite a bit further away than the existing. So it your existing was already has challenges with pumping and we recognized that by putting it further away, it would be further exacerbated. So for that reason, we we looked at, you know, a best practice would be to put a pump gallery in. All of the plants in the Okanagan, their primary clarifiers all have and an adjacent pump gallery right beside them to to aid in the process. So it's not, it's not something that's novel or, you know, new to facilities. They all have these these type of pump galleries.
Thank you.
Counselor Val?
If I'm not mistaken, I think Counselor Peak's question was, when was that decided? Like two months ago, six months ago?
It would have been.
For budget?
Yeah, it was, it was certainly, I I believe in Jeremy, you can correct the timelines, but we would have, you know, this design was probably, I guess it would have been last summer or probably around summer, late spring, I believe, when we made that decision.
And just to clarify that through the mayor, we didn't have an estimate for this until December of this last year. So that's that's when we knew roughly where our costs were going to be. And we're so close to to tender at that point, we felt, put the tender out, let's get a real price that we can come to council with a real number instead of an estimate. Okay, anybody want to put a motion on table, Counselor Patton?
This question is to David from Ecom there, ICOM. You're, as as the engineer for the project, I would assume that getting prices and giving prices to your clients is part of what you're engaged with when we're doing this. So I'm having a hard time thinking that we wait until it goes out to tender, that you did not give us a base price on what this primary pump gallery would be worth. And I think that's where the frustration lies is. We bring you on as a consultant, we expect you on your expertise for your engineering to give us information and this information was not provided. So and by the nodding of your head, I take it that I am correct in my assumptions that the the engineering, that that is part of a scope that we would get from you for the initial design cost.
Well, it is, it is normally part of the scope. I mean, we, the scope as defined by by the district in this case was, you know, I don't believe, and Randy could correct me and Jeremy could correct me, but I don't believe that a cost estimate was specifically something that was asked for at the various design milestones. But certainly, we would normally do a cost estimate at each design milestone. But with this one, we did one at the, like, sort of the preliminary stage and then we did one sort of pre-tender. The pre-tender one is always probably the most important one in our mind, anyway, just to, because that's generally where, you know, sort of the go no-go decision is made whether you want to tender it or not based on the estimate.
Thanks for your forthcoming answers on that, really appreciate it.
Okay, someone want to put a motion on the table, please? Counselor Peak?
I'll put the the motion forward prepared by staff.
Okay, if we just get it up on the screen. It's in the slides, it's the last one in the slide deck. And could I get a second for that, please? Counselor Barkwell? Any further discussion? Counselor Patton?
Thank you, Worship. In our, in the presentation that our director gave, he wanted us to give staff the latitude to make further decisions in regards to pricing and costings. And I'm afraid that I do not have the faith. And I think that I do not want to move forward to that recommendation from our director.
I think that was with the the contingency. But I don't see that necessarily in the motion. Counselor Barkwell?
Yeah, I'm understanding, it's just through discussions with the contractor, they may tweak something, find some savings or whatever, and I guess presumably that will come to council at the time. I definitely think that if you add a component to a project that results in a, you know, two thirds increase, two million dollar project increase on a three million dollar project, that maybe we should have been aware of that because, you know, the project changed by adding that gallery. Nevertheless, it wouldn't have changed my decision, so I'm not maybe as upset as some people. But, you know, these things, they are what they are. The engineers tell us what we have to do and it's the world we live in.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I I echo those thoughts of Counselor Barkwell. We for our residents and for the long-term planning of our community, I think that taking the engineering recommendations for best practices at the sewer treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant is the right course of action. I think the discussion here was about maybe council decisions on other project spending that might have been affected. But I can understand where this project is coming from. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll call the question all in favor. And any opposed? Counselor Patton and Val and opposed, motion carries. Counselor Van Elfen?
Comment, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just that we're we're on YouTube, if I'm not mistaken, right now. Will there be a press release going out on this and the cost overrun on this project? Being that we're in the middle of two AAPs, one for Victoria Road and one for Wharton? So the public is aware that if they are opposed to these projects and these cost overruns, they may vote differently.
We can, yeah, well, we can discuss. Corporate officers, so for going into closed, that's fine. What section of the community charter would that be under?
It would be community charter, section ninety one C.
Okay, so pursuant to community charter, section ninety one C. Could get a motion to go into close, please. Counselor Van Elfen, Counselor Patton, all in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, that carries.